The SCA certificated non-supervisory employees, paraprofessional employees, and Seattle Association of Educational Office employees. This came before Executive Committee November 8th for approval. Note that this is an intro and action item. Motion please, kind sir.
I move that the School Board approve the 2018-19 certificated non-supervisory employees, the 2018-19 paraprofessional staff, and the 2018-19 Seattle Association of Educational Office Professionals collective bargaining agreements with the Seattle Education Association and authorize the superintendent on behalf of the Board of Directors to execute the agreements in the form attached to the School Board Action Report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the terms of these agreements. Immediate approval is in the best interest of the district.
I second the motion.
I see Chief Dr. Clover-Cod of Human Relations Resources. Can you give us a short run-up since we've read about the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
A lot.
Oh, yes. So, good evening. So, I'm here tonight to present to you finally the final full-edited version of the collective bargaining agreement between the Seattle Education Association and Seattle Public Schools. You do have three separate agreements here, one for certificated non-supervisory staff, one for paraprofessionals, and one for office professionals. Now, back on September 18th, 2018, at board meeting, you all did approve a memorandum of understanding that summarized all of the tentative agreements and all that we agreed to, but what you have before you is the actual contract. The total cost of these agreements is approximately $57,617,000, of which $8,790,000 is capital fund eligible. I do want to, before I open it up for questions, I do want to give a really huge thank you to our chief negotiator, Cheryl Anderson-Moore. She is here tonight.
Can you stand and take a bow, please? Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank the rest of our bargaining team who's not here tonight, some of them are, and then our partners with Seattle Education Association. We worked really hard, many long days, long nights, and I think this is a contract we should all be very proud of. We moved forward some good things to advance equity and to support our students and our educators.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director Gary, Director Pinkham.
Thank you so much for your work on this, and you too, Cheryl. I think the fact that we have an empty room and no comments and no pounding speaks volumes, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I just want to definitely point out the equity analysis in here with this new contract where you note that there are going to be 10 new buildings with race and equity teams.
Yes.
And for the record, how many then does that bring total for schools?
Five zero, 50.
Fifty. And I appreciate also the district-wide implicit bias training and the orientation for teachers for culturally responsive teaching. Yeah, I appreciate that we got this into this new contract. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Director Burke.
Just to also publicly share gratitude for yourself, for the entire team, and for our partners at SCA. I know it was a heavy lift. We got a lot of regular feedback on it. Appreciate the transparency and the communication, highly collaborative process, and I think you've set the bar, set a new standard around this. Really thank you for that.
Seeing no further comments, go ahead, Director Patu.
I just want to say, thank you so much for your job. Well done.
It was a complete team effort led by our chief negotiator, Cheryl Anderson-Moore.
That's for everyone that was involved.
Okay, seeing no further comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, number two, Resolution 2018-19-9: Certification of excess levies and calculation of general fund levy rollback for 2019. This came before ANF November 5th for...
You want to take that, Zachary?
Approval.
Motion please.
I move the approval of Resolution 2018/19-9 certifying excess levies and calculation of general fund levy rollback as attached to the Board Action Report. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
I second the motion.
Chief Bergy, can you go through this in a high-level fashion for those of us that don't have economic degrees? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Each year, school districts are required to send in a levy certification to the County Assessor's Office. It estimates the amount of levy funds that can be collected in the upcoming calendar year. We are asking for intro and action as we have had to wait for levy data to come to us from OSPI, and the certification must be to the County Assessor's Office by November 30th, making a very short turnaround period. Almost every year, it's like this, which results in the request for intro and action. I have two slides to share that provide background and address questions that were asked at the Audit and Finance Committee. Slide number one, the maintenance and operations levy rollback. This describes what the rollback is. So, the operations levy is based on two factors, the voter-approved amount and a state formula that limits operating levies beginning in calendar year 2019 to $2,500 per student for Seattle Public Schools. When the voters approve the amount, or when the voter-approved amount is more than the state formula, a district must recertify or rollback the uncollectible amounts so that they don't exceed the state formula. If the voter-approved amount was less than the state formula, the collectible amount would be the voter-approved amount, so rollbacks do not affect the capital levy. Next slide, please. So, at Audit and Finance, directors asked for a slide to show what our rollbacks have been in prior years. So, the blue, the entire box is the amount of what was approved by the voters. The orange is the amount that we have rolled back each year, and you can see, beginning in the 2019 school year, we had, we have a rollback that's $145 million because of the limitation. So, even though our voters have approved a much higher amount, we will be rolling back $145 million. That same structure is in place for what we're putting to the voters in February. As you approved at the last board meeting, we are building in capacity, but we only collect what the law allows. So, it is an option. It gives us choice. It gives us the ability to collect if the law or other factors in the law were changed or inflationary factors change or enrollment changes, so all of those things factor in.
And so, we don't have to do a new levy for a million bucks a pop. Is that correct?
That's correct. A levy election costs us about a million dollars each time we run one, and this would prevent us from having to go back out to the voters.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke.
I want to make sure I understand this slide. The 2019 is on current levy and 2020 is on subsequent levy as presented here. So, the 2020 total is less than the 2019 total, but the allowable amount for collection is essentially the same for those two years.
Correct.
So, this is a, this is a very compelling way to understand how we actually have a reduced ask in our levy from previous levies, but it provides capacity should that rollback change.
Right. And maybe the state would, will increase funding next year. We simply don't know what will happen between now and when the levy would expire. So, if voted in, the levy would run all the way through calendar year 2022, so it's a very far-out projection. Levy law and levy policy has been changed on a regular basis over the last 30 years, probably over two or three years, or some type of an adjustment.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director Gary? Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Intro D1: Amending Board Policy 1010, Board Oversight of Management. This came before Executive Committee November 8th for approval. Approval of this item would amend Board Policy Number 1010, Board Oversight of Management to adjust required reporting timelines. Four oversight areas will be reviewed every year with the superintendent and Exec Committee working together to identify reporting areas. Oversight areas are also revised to align with the present organizational structure. Vice President Director Burke, would you like to lead off, and we can tag-team this one?
Sure.
With Ellie's fabulous talking points.
I'll tee this up a little bit. So, background on this, we have a Oversight Policy 1010, and it has a very, it has a well-identified structure for the oversight meetings and the oversight areas, but what we found with the work on the strategic plan, the work on the levies, the work on bringing in Superintendent Juno, is that we were not able to be as responsive to the risks and priorities, and that essentially the meeting burden was greater than the value that was returned from the oversight, and it would be better to be able to select areas that were identified as higher risk for oversight. The policy has nine different oversight functions, and one of those is work sessions or oversight work sessions on departments. So, this amendment would actually change the number of oversight work sessions from a minimum of four to four and remove the prescribed rotation of topics, which gives us the flexibility as a board to identify the ones that are highest priority to achieve our strategic goals or identify risks. And I think it's a better use of board time, and we got really good collaboration with the staff on how to structure this revised policy. Anything you want to add, President Harris?
Yeah, and props to Director Gary as well, a member of the Executive Committee. One of the, and this was a rich and rowdy, using that word again, discussion with Erin Bennett, Ellie, Deputy Nielsen. We are looking at the concept of doing some written reports, but only if we have a work session to where the board members get to ask questions about them, but we're trying to be creative and respectful of our fiduciary oversight duties, but at the same time, respect the heavy lift that each of the board directors has to do away from their families and their jobs, et cetera, and we think we found a good balance, but please be assured that these changes are not undertaken lightly whatsoever. Okay, next up. Excuse me, Director Mack, please. Thank you.
I think streamlining this policy is a great idea because there's so much work to be done. My one thought is in the list of things under the operations, and it lists a number of things, including facilities, but it doesn't list capacity management, and I'm wondering if that might be an appropriate bullet point to list in there as well. The question to my colleagues who have been working on the items that are in there.
I would suggest to you, you have two weeks to add an elegant amendment and bring it forth sooner rather than later.
What she said.
And, and again, I know it's really hard to do all the homework, but let's make sure we make the phone calls and the emails prior to the dais because we don't need any misunderstandings. Okay, next up, number two on intro items. Amend and rename Policy Number 2090, Program Evaluation and Assessment II: District Educational Research and Program Evaluation and Approval of 2018-19 District Educational Research and Program Evaluation Work Plan. This came before CNI November 6th for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would make edits to Board Policy Number 2090, Program Evaluation and Assessments, to reflect changes to the district's approach to program review and evaluation, as well as to remove assessment language from Policy Number 2090 that is covered in Board Policy Number 2080. Tee it up. Thank you, Chief Tolly.
Michael Tolly, Chief Academic Officer, has stated this Board Action Item, amends Policy 2090, which was previously Program Evaluation and Assessment, and renames it as District Educational Research and Program Evaluation. As also mentioned, the revised policy pertains solely to the district's research and evaluation of our services and programs. We have removed language pertaining to assessment because that language is now in a new policy, 2080, on assessment that was adopted in July of 2017. That policy provides comprehensive guidance on assessment policies and practices. As you may recall, in June of this year, we brought this particular Board Action Item forward for board consideration, and we've brought it back now with incorporating feedback from the School Board. Specifically, the updated policy provides that the superintendent will provide an annual research and evaluation work plan with input from board members, and that plan will be presented to the full board for approval annually. It also provides that there will be a summary of the, all the studies conducted as a result of, contained within this plan on an annual basis, and the summary would be also provided to the board. The revised superintendent procedure for 2090 is also attached to this Board Action Item, is reflective of the process that involved in development of the plan. Also attached to this Board Action Report is the plan itself for the 2018-19 school year, so the 2018-19 District Educational Research Program Evaluation Work Plan is attached. That plan outlines in pretty good detail as the scope of various research studies, as well as the method of which those studies will be conducted.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
I want to express gratitude on the great work that has gone into revising this policy with the compilation of comments and the amount of thought that has gone into it and the staff work, and just I'm greatly appreciative, and I will be supporting this policy revision as well as the plan. It is very comprehensive, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Director Burke?
I want to second that as well. Thanks staff for their work and support on it, and just restate for my colleagues that this essentially now is, has become a sort of a board governance component. As we look at, as Director Harris said, we don't have enough funds. We've got this intersection of budget, programs, schools, students, all of these different elements, and we need to be good stewards of our resources and deliver amazing education for our families, and so this is a tool by which we can help as a board guide staff to focus specific areas of research to allow us to improve our district. So, it's really kind of a bedrock thing, and the items that are in the work plan now include a really different level of granularity from, ranging from evaluating the, sort of the fidelity or the implementation of curriculum adoptions, to multi-tiered systems of support, which has been a multi-year initiative that's under evaluation now, to equitable access to advanced learning, to even systemic policy things like our performance management policy and research around best practices for school performance management. So, this, the items that go in this plan, think of it as the same, at the same magnitude as internal audit, but this is work in collaboratory with staff around systemic improvement rather than audit. So, it's more of a proactive improvement, whereas internal audit is more of a reactive checking to make sure we're doing our stuff. So, it's absolutely amazing. I love it. Thank you very much.
I'm going to close this one out with a big thank you to yourself, Michael, to Eric Anderson, to Jessica. I recognize pieces there that have my fingerprints on them and had some vociferousness behind those issues. I think that if we do this right, we are rebuilding trust with our communities when we make changes, and if we don't evaluate them, we lose every time. And when we make those really hard choices in March, we got to make sure that we have enough bodies to do this work and put our money where our mouth is and make sure that when we, when we make those cuts, and they are coming, that we keep this conversation in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, approval of annual SAP software maintenance and licensing agreements. This came before Ops November 1st for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a one-year agreement extension with SAP in the amount of $340,916.14 to provide Enterprise and Business Systems Incorporated, BSI, software support from January 1, 2019, to December 31, 2019, in the form of a purchase order dated September 19, 2018, and presented to the School Board with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. I see Chief Bergy there. Take it away.
Good evening, standing in for John Kroll, Chief Information Officer. So, these are annual licenses. This is an annual piece of business that the board has to conduct. SAP licenses enable us to run our HR, payroll, finance, accounting, and purchasing system.
And if we don't do this and the system breaks down, then what happens?
If we don't do it, we don't operate the system. We don't even wait for the system to break. We're just cut off.
Okay. And do you have any comments about the Ronald Reagan Building in Washington, DC that we heard about during public testimony?
No.
Fair enough. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Excuse me, Director Burke?
You mentioned this is an annual agreement. Do we have a multi-year contract that's just renewed annually, or what is, what is the, sort of the temporal aspect of this? Do we have the ability to cancel at any annual interval, or is it a multi-year thing? How does that work?
So, SAP is our ERP system, so it's our enterprise...
ERP means?
Enterprise system for all the backbone of running the district operations. We have annual licensing fees that will occur until we redo something, so we would have to get a new system to not have annual licensing fees. And that is scheduled in BEX 5. There is a reimplementation or a replacement, and it's either a replacement or a new system, whatever it might be, is part of BEX 5.
Okay, so there's no multi-year thing other than the annual renewal. It's not like we have a three-year license with an annual renewal. It's just perpetually annually renewing, and it's up to us every year to make a decision if we choose to. Ultimate flexibility. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns? We move to number four, BEX 4: Final Acceptance of Contract P5049 with Cornerstone General Contractors for the Olympic Hills Elementary School Project. This came before Ops November 1st for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept the work performed under Contract P5049 with Cornerstone General Contractors for the Olympic Hills Elementary School Project as final. Deputy Nielsen, were you going to address this?
I will. It is a state requirement that we would officially close out all construction projects. That's what this does. It follows state law in a manner that ensures...
Which D-form is it? I'm sorry, I find that D-dash-form number stuff amazing.
I don't remember what the form is, but it's in WAC 392. I can look it up for you. At any rate, the importance of this is that it guarantees...
It's number 10.
It's number 10. Thank you. It guarantees that the construction was done according to all public works law, and it releases a final payment to the contractor, so it's an essential operation for you to approve. Thank you.
So, this is compliance, correct?
It's compliance, and it assures us that our construction was done properly following all state and federal requirements.
Safety net, fiduciary duty. Director Mack, quickly.
And again, I love final completion because it's a celebration. The building has been opened and operating and doing an amazing job, and yay!
Director Pinkham, please.
Yeah, just in public comment, they talked about Hamlin Creek and the 200-feet buffer. Do you have any comment on that?
I do not. I'm sorry.
So, do we know if we, so we don't know if we violated that or if there was an error there?
We'll check into it.
Would invite the public commenter to email the board and Richard Best, and he is beyond terrific about getting back to you. Number five and last intro item, Approval of Contract SS11822, 2018-19 Bus Transportation Services, Ops November 1st for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute Contract SS11822 for School Bus Transportation Services for 2018-19 with Durham School Bus Services in Perens Durham, Inc., in the form of the contract agreement and attached to the School Board Action Report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. Deputy Nielsen, can you also address whether or not the Durham bus drivers that we heard about, question and public comment, are part of Teamsters?
Yes. So, as you know, the transportation challenges that we've had this fall have created many late buses. In working with our contractor, First Student, we were able to obtain a secondary contractor to add 15 buses to our workings. We did that on a temporary basis. It has helped us immensely. We went from about an 88% on time, which is about 15 minutes plus or minus, up to 94-point-something as of last Friday. And what this particular agenda item does is allows us to continue that same service through the rest of the school year and/or until First Student is able to fill all of their driver positions and handle the contract on their own. The drivers are also represented drivers.
Few questions if I could, so we can guide this, if I might. King County Metro and Sound Transit are having the same issues, even though they pay more and have better benefits in terms of having enough drivers to drive their vehicles. Is that correct?
Yes, and not only them, but districts in this area and across the country. This is a problem for our entire nation.
Okay, and this next one might be better suited to General Counsel Treet. After the bus strike last year, it's my understanding that we entered into negotiations, and I'm not asking you the status of said negotiations. I know better than to do that. I'll get slapped. But we are keeping track of every late bus, every missed bus, every complaint that this district receives with respect to putting forth our position. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, Noel Treet, Chief Legal Counsel. My understanding is that transportation has put First Student on notice regularly of all missed or late routes, which would potentially provide the opportunity to later go back and collect liquidated damages.
Okay, and we're not building any more land to park more buses in, so we can't get two contracts, at least in the near future. We have not been successful in that. Is that correct?
Right. As you know, we sought one land purchase earlier this year, and that transaction failed due to environmental problems with the property. I know the district continues to look for property to house buses, but we haven't been successful in that yet.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Patu?
A place to keep them?
And we can't afford them. And we can barely afford to pay our teachers and to lay out the capital costs. And correct me if I'm incorrect in stating this, Deputy Nielsen, but we have never had our own bus fleet.
That is correct.
And an outlay of capital costs to buy the buses, to maintain the buses, to depreciate the buses, to hire people in a part-time, split-shift basis, we have plenty on our plate already, perhaps?
Yes. And individual buses are about $150,000 apiece, and we would need to buy 300 of those. Worse than just the money, however, is being able to buy 300 buses in one year. It's impossible. Manufacturers don't put them out that quickly in terms of just walking in and saying, "I'd like to buy 300 new buses." They also have to be certified by the State Patrol. It's at least a two-to-three-year process if we had the cash to make that conversion and a place to park them.
Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns? This meeting is adjourned at 7:19. Thank you all for being here. Out to the 34th Legislative District, and I'm going to get the first endorsement from our levy. Bye-bye.